Called the meeting to no order.
Gosh.
Um, this is not able to be with us tonight. She is sick unfortunately. Um, hopefully that doesn't mean Tilia Moore who rode with her today would be soon sick as well. Um, but we, um, we will miss her. So the first item on the agenda is comments from the public on items that are not part of this evening's agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay. Great. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda? That hand.
I want to pull the minutes please.
Okay. Anything else? All right. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda now consisting of approval of warrants, approval of release from contract, and approval of a professional appointment of a temporary math teacher at the high school.
I'll make motion.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
This is A D L.
Aye.
Oh, that one's high school, sorry.
We don't do anything.
Yep.
Right. Okay. Great. So minutes, what's your concern?
My concern is that the very end of the minutes where it talks about communication is getting, um, I think it needs some clarity is what communication is being discontinued? If you just read them, I wouldn't know if I hadn't been in attendance at the meeting. So what communication, I believe we're talking about the communication committee not continuing.
Okay. So I think maybe if we just add to the public, if it says instead of just communications, it says communications to the public, then that won't make that clear. Is that okay? Okay. Anything else? All right. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
So.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say aye. Perfect. All right. Tonight we have, um, an update on social emotional learning. Um, and this is of course a piece that we emphasized in our budget. Dylan has come once before to talk to us. It's an important part of the district's continuous improvement plan. So we're excited to hear how things are going. Dylan.
Thanks for having me, class today. I'm happy to be here with our new social emotional learning coaches. I think you get a chance to meet them. And Jeff Gertrich is here too. He's supporting some of the work for our administration at the high school. So the point of today really is to give you an introduction to the coaches, to, uh, and more importantly, hear about the work to date. I'll give you a quick update on the work that I've been spearheading at the district level, but you'll hear from folks at the school building level around the work that they've done to date. And they're here to provide you some examples to some of the good work that's happening across the district. And of course, we're here to answer any questions that you may have as well. You'll meet them as they come up one by one when they talk about their schools. But again, I provided you this slide in August and that, that outlines the five coaches that we have in the district. Kelly and Alice do serve in a dual role where they are at one school alone and they support the behavior in a pretty intensive way and support the work around S E L. Where the other three individuals are really designated as S E L coaches because their counterparts are B C B As, folks that are supporting the behavior. And I'm happy that you'll get a chance to meet them all tonight. You know, to date, I have been very busy in addition to supporting special education and support services within the district as I have in the past. I'm, I'm really dedicating a lot of time to social emotional learning. One of the, one of our big missions at the school and district level is to do more community outreach and partnerships and to do some education around the work that we've done. In August, I talked to you about the, maybe doing the parent night. That's still on the radar, but I did talk to more people about that. I talked to folks in the P T O, in the junction, in the town, and they were pretty honest with me. They said, you can do that. You're not going to get a ton of people. And if you wanna, if you wanna reach more people, you know, think of other creative ways. And so we did. And I worked with our coaches on the pamphlet that has been distributed to all of our K eight staff to communicate to parents. I think you saw an example of that pamphlet last time. I think Beth brought one of those. And then we've also, this is actually exciting because it's live today. Brian, you can click on that. We've taken the information from that pamphlet and put it in digital format because that's really the more useful way. And so we have a webpage now under what we do. We have an area called social emotional learning. And on this side, we have tips and resources for parents. We have some, some education around what it is. And then we have information around our staff below in terms of our coaches and those types of things. And so in the next communication that goes out to the community, Beth will link this for our families and for our parents so they're aware that this exists because we know that, you know, without that education, people may not find it. But I think we'll get that out digitally in addition to the pamphlet that went out. So that's exciting. You can go back, Brian, to the presentation. So in addition to kind of working on that, I have been connecting with parents, or I'm sorry, with principals and coaches and trying to support the work. You can go back to the slide before it, right? I've been really trying to connect with folks at the school level to support the work there. And I've also been meeting with the district S E L team. We have a great team, consists of educators from our, across pre-K eight. And we've been doing some work. We met in September, we met in October, and we'll meet again before the Thanksgiving break. And then we've dedicated some full days from January on to really dive into the work. In addition to that, I'm preparing for the, I've been working with leadership to prepare for the November 25th and 26th in-service that I'll talk about in a second. You can go on to the next slide now, Brian, which shows kind of where we are in the process.
Dylan, you have a slide advanced.
Okay. You're, you're the clicker and I'm the, you click the links. All right. So, um, here, this shows you where we are in the process. This looks kind of complicated at first, but I think if you, we boil it down, it's pretty clear. We've identified that these are the five competencies that we support in Essex Westford School District. We've said that, um, these competencies aligned with the Castle organization is what we, what we think that we should support all of our staff and all of our kids with. We know that these competencies look different across the developmental continuum. So in kindergarten, self-awareness looks very different than it does in middle school or high school. And you can take any of those competencies and make that same, that same logic and make that same reason. In order for us to really talk about assessment, because that's what some of you have asked for, how are we assessing this? We need to first talk about what does this look like? What are the essential standards that we want all kids to learn across the developmental continuum? And this is where we are at the district level right now. We're taking these competencies and we're trying to identify what does this look like across the continuum? And that's what we call the essential standard work. We're developing learning targets and eventually we'll be developing rubrics to assess students and those types of things. So just as we have to develop those standards with academics, we need to do it with social emotional learning. And this is the bulk of our work at the district level right now. Once we complete this, and we hope to complete a lot of this work in January, February, we'll start talking more about assessments. What are the assessments that we can use? What are assessments that teachers can use in the classroom? And then what are assessments we can use within schools in a broader way, similar to our local assessment, our academic and our local assessment plan? So that's just, that's a good visual of where we are. And again, once we do that, we can really start investing more in curriculum planning, professional development, and instruction. The work around November 25th and November 26th is to really welcome one of the authors of this book that we introduced you to last time. This book is predicated on the idea that social emotional learning is not taught only by the guidance counselor, only from 2:30 to 3:00 in the afternoon, but it's taught by everybody in the building. And we believe that that's an important message that we need to support our staff with. It's some of the work that the coaches have been doing. And these are the learning targets. I know there's a lot here, so I'll just summarize them, but these are the learning targets on November 25th. We hope to, we're gonna, we're gonna bring about 700 educators together. So all folks that work directly with kids, our support staff and our teachers, they'll be coming together to work with Dominique Smith, the author of that book. And they will be hearing, talking, and learning about the importance of integrating social emotional learning into their instruction. How do we leverage teachable moments to support kids? How is it linked to equity? So there's a lot of learning targets here that really are connected to our, our vision. They're connected to the work that our coaches are doing, and we're really excited about that opportunity. So as you can imagine, this, just getting to this point took some work in terms of working with the stakeholders to identify this, but we're in a, we're in a good spot with that. On the 26th, Dominique will be meeting with leadership to, to support us and coaches around the systemic movement of this too. And so we're excited to have him for that second day before folks break for Thanksgiving to meet with leadership. And we'll, we'll kind of build on this day. We also hope to review the results of our equity survey that was done in the spring and, and get some support from him around, okay, here's, here's what folks reported, here's what staff reported, here's what students reported. What are some things that you believe, being an expert in the field, are some things you think as leaders that we can, we can do? So we're, we're excited to have him here for that work as well. So schoolwork to date, these guys have been, you know, very busy at the school level. They've been identified as a school-based team to kind of move the work forward. All schools have or are planning to use a rubric to kind of self-assess where they currently are in regard to this body of work and then set some goals. And all schools have or are in the process of designing an action plan for the, to continue the work this year. We've called that calendar mapping. And so we, we're engaged in that at each school and our coaches are supporting that, that good work as well. So you're not here to listen to me though. You're here to hear from our coaches today, so I'm going to turn it over to them. And I will give you the clicker and you'll try not to forget that it's in your hand as well. So Hiawatha. Alice, you're up first.
I won't need the clicker, I don't think.
Okay.
I just have one page.
Okay.
So I'm Alice Weston. I've worked at the Hiawatha School since 2001 as a special educator. So I'm moving into a new position this year as the S E L and behavior coach, filling those two roles. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing to try to build our awareness and commitment across the school, talk a little bit about what we're doing to try to support tier one instruction, so universal in the classroom, and a little bit about what we're working on to support tier two and tier three instruction for kids who might have more intensive needs or need more. So we have done a rollout to the staff and our principal did a great job drawing some links for the staff between the district theory of action and S E L and the pillars. We spent some, we spent at least a half a day during in-service really reviewing that and looking at the Castle competencies and doing some work as a staff to try to think about how we might implement some of these skills at tier one. We have an S E L team that includes our principal, guidance counselor, classroom teacher, our Howard Center clinician, myself, and our social support coordinator, and we're meeting weekly, three times a month. We have a different purpose one time a month to really work on tier three, safety pieces with more intensive needs. We've done some rubrics to assess how we're doing at the school level, and the teachers have all completed a teacher social emotional learning rubric because we all know that that's kind of a foundation for us in our work is to make sure that we know how to keep ourselves healthy and regulated so we can support our students in that work. So that's been a big thing. We are putting an S E L update in the family community newsletter that goes out, and we have a weekly staff spotlight where we're focusing on some skill work and some coaching. I think what we really want to highlight that we, that we're really proud of in our first tier one instruction, and this came out of the S E L team and out of the spotlight, is that we are rolling out a curriculum called the Zones of Regulation. So this is a curriculum to support students to learn to, um, be aware of their regulation and feelings and to regulate them. And we consider those two skills to be foundational, especially at pre-K three, for kids to be able to develop additional social emotional skills. So we have a poster, if you can show this link, we can see, kind of get an idea of what this whole idea of the Zones of Regulation is. So students across the building are now learning that they're, we used a road sign analogy. You can, you can set it up any way that you like, but they learn about these four zones with the blue zone being sort of the low, under-regulated state, green zone, you're good to go, yellow zone, you're starting to have some feelings, and the red zone is sort of the out of control or really needing adult support in order to help to regulate. So the students are learning to self-assess where they are in these zones. And then the next step after that is to learn how to establish what tools are effective for you in order to regulate yourself so that you can get yourself to go back to the green zone if and when you're out of the green zone. So it's been pretty powerful. We did a skit for the whole school, some of the teachers. We did a skit that showed adults in different zones. We were pretending to be kids and kids were really into it. And we now have the posters across the school. And I'm really happy to report that there are seven teachers now who have set individual goals around rolling out this curriculum or something to, to something related to it. So I was a little worried for a while, like, how do I get going on the coaching? But all of a sudden, it's starting to happen. So we have teachers who are interested, we're starting to get some co-teaching going. We can probably go back to the little list. But that's really our, one of our real big accomplishments thus far, and it's a really big, um, skill. As you can imagine, we have more and more students that I've seen over the arc of my career who are coming in with difficulty in regulating themselves and knowing what they can do to establish getting back to what we call the green zone so they can participate in learning. And we have kids who have intensive difficulties with that, and we have kids who have moderate difficulties with that. And so we really have decided to target that as our real first intervention at that tier one. We're working with Jillian Boudreau to help us to address adult S E L and also creating trauma-informed environments in the classroom. I think I mentioned the coaching. We started a restorative circle practice in third grade, so I'm co-teaching with third grade on that. So that's a process where kids are learning to listen with the heart and speak from the heart and learn to develop relationship skills in a collaborative and restorative fashion. Speaking of restorative, we're also looking at our school-wide discipline procedures and trying to build in more restorative practices for those kids, especially who have more chronic behavioral difficulties. And then there's some work at tier two and tier three, primarily based around individual teams and the kind of support that we're doing with functional behavioral assessments and developing interventions for kids who are really most intense. You don't have to show that example. Um, thank you though. And then we're just starting a small group, a small book group around a book called Fostering Resilient Learners, which is around creating trauma-informed environments at the classroom level. Anybody have any questions or?
The Zones of Regulation, is that common to the third grades or common to all the buildings in that it'll create a common language going up the food chain?
Yeah, so I think it's a, it's a, it's a fairly common intervention strategy that's used in some other schools, but we haven't adopted it school-wide at Hiawatha. It tended to be more at tier two and tier three, but we now are adopting it school-wide so that it's transferable and kids are hearing it. And there are, there's one grade level and several other teams who are doing individual goals just around implementing that and supporting that. So we're developing some rubrics for assessment and stuff like that right now.
Thank you. I'd just like to comment that it's exciting to hear that you're working on restorative practices and that's something that's more, I've been very interested in. Thank you.
Thanks, Alice. We can do questions at the end as well. I want you to hear from everybody if you'd like. Summit in Fleming, Patrick.
Hello. My name's Kat McIlroy and I am the S E L coach at Summit Street in Fleming. And prior to being in this role, I was actually serving as the school psychologist, K to eight in the Essex Junction Schools as well as Westford for the last two years. So we've been doing a number of different things at both buildings and again, starting a lot with building awareness and commitment to the importance of social emotional learning in schools and how we feel it can help support students, both emotionally but also academically. I think one of the things that has been really exciting for me as we've been doing this and I've become more familiar with each school is there are so many structures and strategies already in place in both of these schools. And so it's really a lot of the work is how do we create kind of a coordinated, cohesive, consistent structure to support these things? So we've been doing a lot of work around that. We've done whole school rollouts around the different competency areas, just to familiarize staff with the different areas that we'll be working on moving forward. We've also done, I've been working to facilitate the S E L teams at both buildings, and a lot of our work to date has been around the rubrics. So completing the Castle rubrics to self-assess where we are in some of the different focus areas to again, help identify the areas of strength that we have and then also where do we want to continue to devote attention and time to moving forward to continue to grow those areas. We also have done some work linking kind of current and past instructional practices to S E L. I think what it's helped to do is, I think helped staff understand that they're doing this work right now. Moving forward, we want to do it with more consistency and more intention, but it's happening right now. And so I think it's made it feel, um, made it feel like it's already part of the culture and not one more thing. And I think people are really starting to feel that when we're able to look at all of those structures and strategies in place that are already happening. I've also done some co-teaching with, with some classroom teachers around some of the different competency areas and also to demonstrate what it make, what it might look like for them. So what might these lessons look like? And how we can also circle back during other times to embed them into other academic structures during the day? If we're teaching students about self-regulation or problem solving, what does that look like in a math class or what does that look like in a science class where they're using some of those skills? A lot of that too has come from teachers, their identified needs, themes they're seeing in their classroom teams or classroom cohorts that they want to work on moving forward. We've also been working, collaborating with teachers to kind of integrate cell practices into current units of study. If teachers have certain themes that they're using throughout the year, how do we work some of this cell work into that? So that's been really interesting as well. I find I'm trying to gather a lot of resources for them and then sit and, and figure out how do we work these different structures into these lessons? I've also worked with some teams and teachers around coaching for more individualized targeted student needs as well. If a classroom teacher has three or four students who might have an area of need, how do we create a structure for the classroom? So we're not just targeting individual students, but we're providing some type of support to the entire, the entire classroom. I've also been participating as a member of building-based teams, sometimes of student support teams. They have different acronyms, but essentially how do we look at the system of the school and embed this, these, these competencies in the, in ideas into that system to support students? So again, it's not an individualized one-by-one approach, but we're really providing a more cohesive approach to supporting these students' needs. And also, we've worked with some grade level teams around developing their professional goals around S E L. I think there's a lot of excitement in the district around this work and again, a lot of passion. We have very passionate educators and I think they recognize the importance of these skills, again, from elementary school through high school and beyond, and are really looking for different ideas and support and resources and how do we work this into what we're already doing to make sure that all kids have access to this instruction in a meaningful way? And then we're also creating a regular newsletter going out to staff that might include resources, it might include research, specific strategies, tools, handouts, printables, a variety of different things that they may need or may help support this work. So that's kind of what we've been doing at Summit Street in Fleming for the last, you know, two, two and a half months. So I don't know if any, you have any questions now or if we just do that at the end?
I'd like to ask you about your question. Do you think?
Okay. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Sierra Smith. I'm the S E L coach at Essex Elementary School and Founder's Memorial School. I'm a newly certified behavior analyst. That's now official. So, um, some of the work that we've been doing initially, we, our focus has really been similarly to the other coaches, is really building the awareness and commitment schoolwide. And so, um, that's really happening in all of the conversations throughout the school. Most conversations that were happening, we're having with staff members, students, as well as parents, the social emotional learning topic is really embedded in those conversations. And so not only is it happening in that informal kind of blending it in with the rest of the academic conversations, but we're also really focusing on kind of posting it wherever we can. And so the way that we're doing it, we're also, something that, that's also lending itself to is improving school climate. So, for example, at Essex Elementary School, for the first six weeks, we are a responsive classroom school. So, um, some of the competencies that kind of tie into our Castle competencies are cares, which is cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. And so we really supported the teachers in taking the first five weeks in teaching each one of these competencies separately, examples within the classroom as well as across all of the different school environments. And then we took the final week to start our first all-school morning meeting, which really embeds those social emotional competencies by being inclusive, engaging, and optimistic. And, um, so with that, we're again, just getting the students excited and the staff members excited about all of the important qualities that it takes to be self-aware and regulating your emotions, as well as socially, you know, developing those relationships and understanding the perspective of others. So one way that we're building awareness and commitment is if you click on the showing your pride board, we're recognizing, oops. Okay, so never mind, I'll just tell you about it. Basically, it's just, we're recognizing students, teachers are doing this, all staff members across the school, doing things that are helping each other, helping themselves, taking care of their school, taking a picture of them, giving a little caption to what they were doing and posting it on their board. Then they get that picture on the certificate sent home so that the parents are aware really what we're valuing at Essex Elementary School. At Founder's, we have started the, and I actually, you don't even need to click on that either. I don't think it's going to work. Realizing I didn't share it.
Right.
The F M S Kindness Cats. So this is really cool. We're, we're really kind of trying to get that student voice and leadership in this process with some of the third grade through fifth grade students. And so some of the work that we're doing with them is, we had a presenter, Sam Drazen, a couple weeks back, that really talked about equity and kindness and empathy. And so the way to carry that out throughout the whole school year is we've established the kindness cats who are working on, every student wrote down like a kindness quote. And so the students are now coming in for the morning announcements and reading their kindness quote over the morning announcements. And, um, we're also posting those kindness quotes throughout the school and we're working on plans of how to actually create posters and bring them into the community and start sharing these initiatives with a greater audience. We're, uh, just like the rest of the schools, we also have a regular newsletter, both Essex Elementary School as well as Founder's. Most, moving forward, it's going to be during every edition of it, but for, for now, it's been most, we've had a little section explaining social emotional learning, some of the work we're doing at the school level, as well as some links for parents to follow, to support social emotional learning at home. Additionally, a big focus has been improving school-wide systems of support. And so the way that we've done this has really been to examine school-wide these areas that can sometimes feel a little hectic. There's a lot of students in them and not as many adults. These areas are like recess, bus room in the morning, transitions in general, cafeteria. So we're examining those areas and taking a look at some of the behavioral data that has been collected over last year as well as the beginning of These areas are like recess, bus room in the morning, transitions in general, cafeteria. So we're examining those areas and taking a look at some of the behavioral data that has been collected over last year as well as the beginning of this school year, and assessing what, assessing as well as strengthening, what are our expectations of students and how are we teaching them? Are we ensuring that the staff members all know what these expectations are and feel comfortable teaching them to the students and reinforcing them? And how are those expectations teaching the social-emotional competencies that we're So some of the ways that we're doing that is during the transition in from recess into the cafeteria, we're taking a little bit of extra time to gather the students up, provide a little bit of feedback to them about how recess went, give them some, something to think about as far as a goal for their next time at recess, as well as practice a self-regulation strategy, such as like a group deep breathing exercise. Ways that we're doing that in the bus room is establishing expectations, teaching them to the students and to the staff members, and making sure that these expectations are followed through consistently and referred to frequently. One of the ways that expectations, these behavior expectations are upheld is promoting that common language across different environments. So one way that we're doing that is we have like a voice level chart, so that gives all different teachers a common language to use with expressing what our expectations are for students, instead of just saying, quiet down, it's use a voice level one, really explicitly teaching what that is and reinforcing it, and giving them lots of opportunities to practice that. And then working on making sure that our approach to student discipline is systematic as well as student-centered, and in a way that helps them learn and practice positive replacement behaviors. And so one of the ways that we do that is I'm working with teachers in the classroom as well as different like specials areas and these other less structured areas, in setting up a familiar take-a-break area for students with different levels of responses and the strategies that they can use to help them stay with the group at that point. And then also in the take-a-break area, there's different, there's different strategies such as deep breathing, chair stretches, things that they can do to kind of reset themselves, self-regulate, and get back to learning. So that is a short summary of a lot of the work that we've been doing.
Hey there. I'm Jessica Butler. I'm the social-emotional learning coach between ADL and EMS. And I'm actually brand-new to the district, so a lot of my work initially was just to make sure that I'm developing relationships and trust with faculty and educators, so that they know and can accept me as a willing collaborative partner, rather than somebody who's kind of coming in with my own initiative and agenda. And it's been a really wonderful experience so far as I get into classrooms and I'm meeting with teachers. So I can kind of go through how that's looked between the two middle schools, and if you have any questions, feel free to raise your hand. So one of the things that I started doing was the Spotlight on SEL, which was a weekly newsletter to all faculty and staff, and not just teachers, but also IAs and like maintenance staff, and basically everybody who's part of the middle school communities, because I think that's a really important piece of this work, is that everybody's interacting with students, and this work is really valuable for everyone. So it's kind of transmitted through all different interactions with all different people. And so I'll click on, or I'll have you click on that in just a minute, if that's okay, kind of go back to that. So what, what we've been really working on a lot is incorporating the castle competencies into just daily life and language. That would be faculty meetings, team meetings, I have been going to all team meetings at this point, almost all I would say, across the board, including the Unified Arts team meetings, so that I can kind of make sure that this language is consistently incorporated into just regular meeting structure, rather than additional things. This is kind of something that we're practicing using, and I can model using that language, strength-based approach, reframing things, all of the strategies that are really important for giving teachers agency and giving students agency or that personal power to be able to kind of influence our environment, and like self-awareness and self-regulation, everything that's involved in the castle competencies we're talking through in terms of team meetings. So there are things that I'm sharing with individual teachers as I meet with them, as needs kind of come up. And in terms of meetings around specific tier-two or tier-three students, had a really wonderful opportunity to kind of infuse or highlight in those processes areas where there are SEL competencies kind of mixed in, but can be beefed up a little bit, and that's been really wonderful. It's kind of put a new spin, and it seemed to really inspire educators across the board. And then in terms of social contracts and thinking, and I'll kind of touch base on a little bit later down, but one of the things that's really important, I think, that some of the other SEL coaches touched on was the idea of restorative practices. At both schools, there is this kind of foundational belief in restorative practices, but they're a little bit disjointed on how they kind of are presented and how it looks. And this work has given a really phenomenal lens to be able to unify that and to make sure that that's kind of at the forefront and like really interwoven in with equity and with SEL. So it's been really wonderful for that. The school-based teams, they're a little bit different in each middle, each middle school, but essentially, they include support staff, administrator, school-based clinicians, nurse, teacher. So there's, we're working to kind of get a little bit more teacher representation in terms of the meeting front, just to make sure that all those perspectives are included. But one of the things that's really, really beneficial that I feel is, is that my attendance at the team meetings, which happen weekly, is this really wonderful way to kind of transmit language and, and the progress that we're making, and include those voices in that process as well. So that's kind of how that's happening. In terms of individual teacher meetings, that has been something that's been really inspiring to me. I've had a number of teachers over the past month invite me in and actually request a coaching cycle, where I set a goal with them. So we, so how it started for one teacher in particular, I'll kind of use this as an example, is going to the classroom, observe, share just my original observations kind of straight off the bat, and then we work together to develop a goal. And then I'm doing observations for the next five weeks around that goal, and then looking at some strategies that can, that the teacher can implement around that goal, and then taking more data on how that went. And that has kind of exploded and been a really wonderful thing. I now have teams who have requested that to be across team, so I'm not only looking at goals for a teacher, I'm looking for goals across teams to point out and to be able to share consistencies and inconsistencies, and to be able to align language and practices. So that's been really phenomenal across team. As you know, that middle schools are a little bit more, I wouldn't say inconsistent, but there's a lot of differences just based on the classes and the number of transitions for students, and that's been a really phenomenal piece of this work. So that's great. And then in terms of data collection, I think some of the SEL coaches touched upon, transitions are always kind of one of those, those topics that I think everybody understands that a lot of the SEL work can be within the transitions of non-academic time, hallway, cafeteria, recess. So in order to be really intentional and relevant about the work that we do and the progress that we make and strategies we try, both middle schools have been really dedicated to using data to drive those choices and to drive those changes. So that's where a lot of my work has been in the past month, is collecting data on those different environments and those different experiences for students to be able to use. In terms of lesson plan development, a lot of special educators who are providing differentiation and working with teachers to differentiate curriculum have really been open to working with me and including SEL as a component of that. So not only am I working directly with teachers, but I'm also working align, aligning with special educators, who are able to help differentiate that SEL work within the lesson plans, which is really great. And then in terms of discipline policies, again, restorative justice practices, both schools have, so EMS has developmental design, which is this kind of, this philosophy around response to behavior, but it also includes a morning meeting routine similar to responsive classroom. And then ADL also has not, it doesn't have the same term developmental design, but they have a morning meeting practice where in the morning, they get together at homeroom. And that has been really phenomenal too. As we, as teachers learn more about this, and as I'm really focusing on the strengths and highlighting all the good that's currently happening, I'm noticing more and more people get excited about what they're already doing and then inspired to take that further and to connect with each other, to take it further and to learn from each other, which is really great. And so that might be a good time to click on the spotlight. Thanks for waiting for me. So this is a running blog style that I do, and so it seems really long, but if you can keep scrolling for a minute, there you go, or back just a little, I'm sorry. Thanks. So each, each week, I kind of do a chunk of it, and it goes a little bit lower, but usually it's kind of hitting a topic that's actually driven by the teachers. So in my team meetings, I'm hearing themes that keep coming up, I'm kind of learning about what challenges students and teachers face in the classroom, and then I'm trying to tailor my response in this newsletter based on that, based on those themes. And so it started, you know, if you go all the way down, it's pretty, you don't have to go all the way down, but if you would to go, if you were to go all the way down, you'd, you'd see a bunch of strategies that are really relevant and things that are really classroom practice-based, that are universal, that goes from chorus to PE to math to science, really universal classroom practices. And then as, the more I did this, the more teachers started getting excited about their own work, and then I started being able to kind of recognize and celebrate with them what they're already doing. And so the past two posts have been specific teachers, this is Ryan Dudley, he's at ADL, and then before that. And so it's just this really wonderful way to connect the educators, and I left a really phenomenal meeting just before this, and our team that was meeting about this SEL work ended up being a combination of the Restorative Practice CIP and the SEL, so about 20 educators. And the excitement in the room after brainstorming and talking and just thinking about ways that they can celebrate each other and learn from each other was this huge kind of moment where everybody just seemed really excited, and it was really inspiring to feel. So this has been a really great resource to connect everybody across both middle schools and have that consistency. Thanks. And then just a couple more things that are highlighted that either will be in the spotlight or are highlighted on the side. Finding the good, both schools really, through the work of the calendar map process and the SEL teams, decided on this idea of finding the good this year and focusing on how to celebrate individual strengths and diversity, and not as like a project and not as like a curriculum, but really just how to embed that in everything that happens. For instance, the fall jamboree that EMS does, or the basketball tournament that ADL does, I haven't been to it yet, but I hear it's through the charts, big. So really just looking at these school-wide things that can infuse this more intentionally and use this as a lens to when organizing and creating events. So that's been really great. And then, and then the last is, a lot of students are working towards PLPs and some project-based learning, and teachers seem really excited about hearing and learning about this as they build their awareness and commitment. A lot of things that have been coming up is teachers asking, how can we do more of this, and how can we connect more with the Essex community and use that as a component of the SEL? So that's great.
Hi. My name is Kelly Forbes. I am the SEL Behavior Coach at Westford. I am new to the district. I was previously a behavior analyst up at Northwestern Counseling, actually, and so I'm very happy to be down working here in Westford in particular. I feel like it's a nice little mix of, it's a very unique school, being K through eight, that we get nice little guys, then we also have some of those teenagers with very big personalities. So it's, it's, it's great to work with, of trying to be mindful of looking at that whole practice of when we're developing these SEL essential standards of how can, what is this really going to look like in a K through eight school? It's very unique. So some of the pieces that we've started with is similar to some of my other coaches, is that coming into this role, I really needed to show to the staff that I'm here, I'm here for you, I want to work with you, I want to help you build this commitment, this is your work, and let's work together on this. I can give you strategies, I can be your sounding board, let's work through this together so we can kind of look at increasing our staff and students' SEL abilities. So looking at how we've kind of begun some of that work with, within the staff, is within our faculty meetings, our first one, as well as just about every single one that we've had, we always try to review our castle competencies, trying to bring it back to that framework of these are the five that we're trying to focus on, as well as even within that, to just kind of bounce around a little bit. We are within that, trying to focus on having an activity within our faculty meetings that can be connected to an SEL standard. So looking at doing think-alouds with, with our staff members, looking at partnering up with different, with different grade-level teams, that way teachers are also carrying different ideas, because an eighth-grade teacher may end up getting a great strategies from a kindergarten teacher, just because it's a kindergarten teacher doesn't mean that that strategy won't work in eighth grade. Sometimes those strategies are super effective as we're going on. I do also have a Westford SEL Spotlight. That's something that we are also looking at, it's been shared with staff on a regular basis, but also looking at increasing that to share that with families as well, so that we'll have not only classroom practices, but then also practices that parents can try at home too, as a way to be able to really branch that outward with our, with our community. We've also looked at establishing, really firmly establishing, an SEL team. Westford, being a fairly small school, having five different meetings ended up becoming very draining on some staff and not being able to always be in attendance, because this Tuesday, I have to go over here instead of being at the SEL meeting. So what we were able to do is condense them all into one meeting. So within that meeting, we're meeting every week, every Monday afternoon, actually, and we're looking at reviewing behavioral data, even if it just means touching upon it for a brief moment, creating opportunities, as I was just talking about, within staff meetings for, for SEL development with our staff members, as well as planning school-wide celebrations as we are a PBIE school, of looking at continuing that work, and we're noticing that students are engaging in positive behaviors, that classrooms are meeting their goals, and planning that celebration that we can do as a larger community. Back in, I think it was the beginning of October, we were able to do a large cornhole tournament that we did at K through eight, and that was a huge success, the kids loved it, we broke it, we did break it up between K through four, and then also had a five-through-eight tournament, but the kids really enjoyed it. We also had staff complete a personal assessment and reflection as a way to reflect on their own SEL abilities and their skills. And one piece that we did with that is had it also being sent within Google Forms back to that, that user that sent, that filled out the form. That way, as a hope of later in the year, we can reuse that form, and teachers will have a way to be able to compare on a digital format, because I know I always lose paper, so sometimes I think having it be in the digital format is a little bit easier. Providing opportunities for staff recognition is definitely a huge piece of beginning some of this work, is we need to recognize as a staff when other staff members are doing great things that we're, that we're seeing. So we've created in the staff room, this little chart that says if you see a staff member do something great, give them a high five, and we just stuck these cool little Post-it notes that say high five on them, you can write a quick little anonymous note, stick it in their mailbox, and it's just a way that staff are able to anonymously recognize another, another member of their team. As a school community, we are doing a staff book read on All Learning is Social, All Learning is Social and Emotional, which is great that come December in service, November in service, I'm sorry, that that work will be connected with when Dominique Smith is coming to talk. So we've been able to look at each chapter each month. Improving our system, our whole school systems of support with both, with myself being new this year, as well as we did have a new social support coordinator coming in, what that meant is that when staff needed to respond to behavior, there were two new people coming into this. So one thing that we really did is collaborated and calibrated on how we are going to respond to a behavior. That way, if there was a need for, for behavioral response, that that response was consistent every single time. And if you could actually click on the review behavior And if you could actually click on the review behavioral data for me. Well, this was one thing that I was able to share with Dylan, which was very exciting, is because of, because of that consistency and that calibration that we were able to do right from the beginning of the school year, our referrals have been down significantly. And some of that can be connected to other, other work that has been done, you know, getting other services into the school for sure. But having that consistency and that calibration has definitely ended up, we've seen an impact already, that there's been a reduction in behaviors by at least 40% at this point, which is huge. Another piece that we're doing of looking at those different levels of support is been partnering with particularly 7, 8, and 5, 6 teams on being able to co-plan for their students so that we can look at incorporating different SEL strategies, as well as how we can frame their morning meetings to be a very mindful group. That way, we're incorporating some of those practices daily. As a BCBA, I am also completing FBAs for students within the school, which also means developing behavior plans within that. And part of that as being the BCBA that I am, behavior analyst, of really being able to partner with teachers and special educators and paraprofessionals on making sure that then when that plan is written, that it's being implemented with fidelity. A plan's only as good as it is being implemented. And that's, I think, another huge piece of why we have been able to be successful on looking at that behavioral data piece. But that's some of the work that's been done at Westford.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. My name is Jeff Goodrich. I am the Academic Dean of Students here at Essex High School. Others have shared their backgrounds. My career has been mostly here, it was my 26th year at Essex High School, 20 years in the classroom as a social studies teacher, teaching sociology, poli sci, economics, government, and current issues, world affairs. We have a guest from St. Mike's from the poli sci department, so welcome. So it does look a little bit different at the high school. This is a sliver of my body of work, but it's very much embedded in my body of work as the Dean of Students. I also sit on the pre-K-12 District SEL Committee. So it's wonderful to work with everyone that we've heard from so far, plus other educators and school counselors from each of the buildings. So on the SEL district team is myself, a school counselor, Nicole Gillis, and a school English teacher, Erin Cronikfeldt. So it's great to see the body of work and the efforts that are being put into this at a district level. And I think it's a great sign of this progression to unify the district, which I commend all of you for. And this is a way that we're going to be tying some consistent messages throughout a child and the parents and the families and the community's educational experience. So, I don't have as many bullets, but I will elaborate as needed. Our rollout did take place at a full faculty meeting on the 17th, where we started talking about the framework in those five areas of competencies that we've adopted through CASL. And drew correlations throughout that rollout about different types of behaviors that might be exhibited and what are some good strategies in areas of potential response to said behaviors. It's also important to note that this is a lens through which we are looking at our role as educators. And it's not necessarily an add-on or one more thing to check off, but it's something to be kind of done throughout our body of work and woven into our body of work. And we too are surrounded. There's a lot of consistencies from what I've heard from my colleagues. And I don't want to be redundant, but there is a great group of educators at the high school. Again, it looks different at the high school because of our size and our scope, the number of teachers in classrooms. But there's a lot of really good work around SEL that is being done and has been done at the high school for years. And I want to highlight one of those at a later bullet. So we're trying to build a common language and a common understanding of what the expectations are around this area of focus. And that's kind of what we addressed through the rollout process. We have established an SEL committee that was formed and has met for the first time last week with 11 educators who are working on trying to help roll out further, a deeper understanding of the competencies and what it can look like in the classroom setting. And in that area, it's also tightly woven with our restorative practices, work that is probably five, six years deep in using that approach, attempt to use that approach through our discipline procedures. A lot of the work that I'm doing as the Dean of Students is in the hallways, a lot of time in the hallways, in classrooms, working with teachers on approaches to tier-one and tier-two interventions. Ashley Hanlon, who is one of our skilled educators in our RISE program, has put together a beautiful newsletter, which Brian would love to click on. Thank you, sir. And a little scroll down, I'm just going to highlight kind of one section, but in her newsletter, she goes into what it is, what it isn't. This is some fun facts, Brian, that I'd like to freeze on. I'm not sure if you saw the same slide in Dylan's presentation a while back, but it, it is kind of showing some data that supports this district initiative, this district area of focus. And yeah, it could be kind of tough to read, but it's, it's data, it's hard data and it's, and it's, and it's great to see it and share it. There has not been resistance. There's been a lot of great feedback to this, to this newsletter. A lot of great discussions are happening organically. And again, I'm working with teachers on a daily basis in and out of their classrooms around these approaches and strategies. If you could scroll down just a little bit further, Brian, that right there, perfect. I'm sorry, as teachers. As teachers, we're constantly on display for our students. And this is just kind of like trying to get teachers' heads around what this is. And this little paragraph has generated a lot of positive discussion. We are all models of behavior. We are all treating each other in certain ways and just trying to get that mindset within our educators to appreciate and understand that the way they're interacting with students can be reflected and replicated when it's a student-to-student interaction. Thank you, Brian. And the last bullet, I want to say one more thing about this committee. The committee was just met and I met with one of the teachers in it. And they're thinking about trying to fuse some of that work in with advisories. And years ago, we had a more structured system for creating modeling opportunities in and between students. And I did want to highlight that we have that, actually a member of our board is, I have witnessed on numerous occasions, a tremendous model, and I'm sure Julie and I do. But Laura goes out of her way on a regular basis to work with students in a way that is respectful and kind in modeling the behaviors that are entrenched within our SEL work. So part of this committee's vision is to try to create more consistent and intentional ways to create modeling opportunities. And again, with the rollout, not to keep going backwards, it's important for all of us to appreciate and understand that this isn't about a subset of students. This is about all of our students. Because sometimes we get into a pattern of behavior of, "Well, we're doing this because of X population." We, we all know, St. Mike's again does a tremendous job embracing the reality of mental health in today's society and all of our students. It's a reality for all of our students. And having a lens of social-emotional learning, I think it's really important that we don't talk about it for a subset, but for all. And it's, it's great that we're talking more about adolescent mental health. So meant to showcase that in that rollout portion. And the last thing is just the daily work that goes on, both in hallways and in classrooms. I have been here for, as I said, 20, this is my 26th year. I do have a strong institutional knowledge. I have a fairly strong understanding of our faculty. I'm affable and teachers are continually checking in with me, looking for help with some tier-one, tier-two interventions. And we talk about strategies. We're talking about the CASL model. And I'm really looking forward to the K8 work. Y'all end up here eventually, so I think it's a fantastic investment, which I appreciate. And I'm going to turn it back to Dylan for the Q and A.
Thanks.
So, you know, we have a lot of information that we presented and we will get you these slides. I know those slides I shared with Beth last week, we just had the first five. We've added some more detail. We've added some links and we'll make sure they're shareable and accessible to you as well. So I apologize for that. I guess I just wanted to open it up, see what questions you had for me or the coaches. Jeff?
Kelly?
I can definitely see how this, developing these competencies will in the long run make life easier in the classroom for everyone when people have ways to deal with their feelings and treat one another well. And obviously, there's going to be less time spent on disciplinary issues and better learning can occur. I like the aspect that I heard about from several of you about helping teachers identify where they're already doing these things and share it with other people. But I was wondering what kind of feedback we've been getting about like whether this is creating, and at least currently in the initial stages, like more paperwork or feeling like some of you tried to address like proactively that it would be an extra thing, but like, is that something that people are worried about or is it not really adding?
Yeah, I'll let you guys, if you want to answer that, I'd give my perspective too.
Yeah, I can share. So granted, my thoughts are more subjective because I'm kind of looking at it from my lens. But what I will say is that when teachers, I think initially, heard about this as an idea, I think there might have been some ideas around, "This could be more work for us. What is this going to do in terms of process?" And what I've noticed from team meetings is people saying, "Wow." Because SEL, to, to the work, it's, you know, making sure that everybody's voice is heard. So even in a team meeting or an IEP meeting, adding in some, some really kind of fundamental strategies for making sure that everybody's voice is heard and there's closure to a group, that in itself is an SEL strategy. And when that happens at the team level, teams are starting to recognize that it's more efficient. That's what they've kind of shared, is that some of the team meetings are more efficient or that the communication protocols seem more clear because there's something in place so that they can kind of communicate and the same information isn't bouncing around, but it's more direct. And so in that respect, I'm noticing from teachers that there's potentially a little bit of a spike in anxiety of like, "What does this mean?" Because the ceiling hasn't really, you know, it's, it's still unexpected of where it's going. So there is some raise in anxiety with that. But at the same time, there's this parallel of noticing and I kind of tried to share when I was talking, this excitement, this like inner excitement where teachers, even today, we're talking about how this is the first time where I've been like really excited about all these potential opportunities to connect on a really professional level to improve our practice. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's kind of where it's at at the middle school.
And I think teachers tend to, teachers work very hard. We all know how hard the job is. And I think most teachers recognize that one reason why the job is so hard is because of the issues around social-emotional learning and the increase in difficulty with mental health and behavioral issues that we're seeing across the school. So while they do see this is going to be more work, I think they also recognize the value that we need to aspire to and that it's going to support kids. And that, you know, I'm seeing teachers like, "Okay, what are we going to do? Let's roll up our sleeves." Because we have seen a lot of change over the years. And it's, it's important, it's foundational.
And I think that's part of the work around building commitment and awareness. I think that the, the pattern in schools or anywhere is to want more people to work directly with the kids that are struggling. And this, and the coaches, their primary role is not to pull the kids' work with them. So, you know, part of the work around building commitment and awareness is to help folks understand that, that it's the work that, it's all of our responsibility, it's all of our work that will pay dividends. And I think that, you know, honestly, I think we're in a pretty good spot in the district with that recognition and commitment, but, but we're not in the same spot at every school. And so that's the work we're doing is, is trying to move things forward. And I think the, the work we do in November with Dominique will help reinforce that idea. So his, his book, again, really drives that point home. And I think that will be, that will reinforce the work that's been done to date. And for those schools that aren't as far along in terms of the commitment and awareness, I think that'll, that'll help, which might be.
Brendan?
First of all, it's impressive, the amount of expertise that has been brought to bear on this initiative. It's great to meet all of you and to hear about the things you're doing in your individual buildings. I guess the question I have, as I've heard you each speak, is the work that you're doing affects all parts of the building, every classroom, every student. So what, what is the role of the principal in the work that you're doing in your buildings?
I mean, I think, I think obviously the principal as the building-based leadership is, is the kind of a critical component of all of this work. I think also, as, some of us are new to our buildings, we're new in our roles, making sure that we understand the culture of each building, the work that's been done, and helping to really, I think, create a sense of security and permission for staff to, to get into this work and have these meaningful conversations because it can be hard at times. And I think, as Alice said, I think the staff are working so hard, the educators are working so hard. And I think the principals have really, are really critical too in setting that tone around just giving people the time to kind of process all of this and take it all in. And again, I think just really modeling a lot of these tools and strategies for their staff. I know I've seen the administrators really work hard to give the, the staff time to, to voice their concerns, to honor that time, to make them feel like their voices are being heard. Because it is, it is, I think, for certain people, it is still something they're not so sure where it's going. And so it can be a little bit, not scary, but it may still feel like it's going to be one, another thing added to their very, very full plate. And I think the more that we have those conversations, the calmer that kind of feeling is becoming. And again, I think seeing so much of the work and how much of it is in place has helped kind of bring some of that fear down as well. But again, I think the building-based administrators are critical in driving this forward. They know their staff, they know their communities, they know their cultures. And I think have a really good sense of where their buildings are in regards to this work and where are the areas that we need to continue to grow.
Can you expand a bit more?
Actually, I think this kind of segues a little bit off of Brendan's question. And I heard a few of you talk about it as well. But the teacher buy-in, has that been something that's been pretty receptive? Like across the district? Or have you guys run into any unique challenges that, you know, maybe you've had to adjust your thoughts or adjust the way that you intended to implement some of the things that you're doing? I just kind of want to get a feel because we as a board, I think we like to hear, or at least I've mentioned it, I like to hear the successes, of course, but I also like to hear the challenges that you guys face and how you overcome them. Have there been any experiences like that?
I'll definitely answer that. I feel that there are teachers for sure that are gung-ho on board right from day one. And then other teachers, we've had to spend, I think, some more time trying to build that relationship and get that buy-in from them and really help them understand that I'm here to work with you. I'm not here to tell you how to run your classroom necessarily or what you should be doing in terms of implementing a strategy. Rather, let's, let's collaborate and try to come up with something together. And so for me in particular, what that has meant is spending some more time with those teachers to try to build that relationship and just be within the classroom and help out in any way that I can. That way, over time, you're starting to see that I can trust you and that you are here to be able to kind of give me some feedback in an appropriate way and also give me some ideas to how I can improve my response in the future.
And do you find that that's been effective?
So far, yes.
Good.
Do you mind if I speak just a little bit to that too? So I would say that for me, the, the buy-in piece isn't the SEL. I think that every teacher really, I think, at their core believes in, in the need and the presence of SEL in everything. I think that more of, and I wouldn't call it resistance, but caution, I guess, would be more about how to use, I don't know, I don't want to say for everybody, but for me as a coach, because it's a brand-new role. It's not something that's ever been in the school before. And so really just trying to understand how to incorporate something new into your practice when you already have kind of a really full plate. And not necessarily a new initiative or a new topic, but really a new resource and how to figure out how to use that. And so that's more, I think, of where the buy-in of building relationships and trust with a person. But for, for me, I really think that like at their core, the SEL component isn't what is, where there's any resistance. I think across the board, people really understand that. When you think about what you want to have students to be able to do when they graduate, it's not necessarily content-driven, it's SEL-driven. So I think that, that's kind of across-the-board theme for teachers in terms of acceptance to that. it's not necessarily content-driven, it's SEL-driven. So I think that that's kind of across-the-board theme for teachers in terms of acceptance to that.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Diana?
There was one of you that had on your chart about that there was 40% reduction of something. Okay, so my question is, what's the student impact? What's the student results? How are you monitoring that your work with teachers is having direct impact on students?
So some of what we look at with that is, we have that behavioral data of looking at those office discipline referrals, so that time out of class. But really what that is showing us in the long term is that the fewer referrals that we have, that is correlated with how much time that that student is spending within the classroom. And so what we're hoping to see long-term, and hope that this will reduce over time, is that instead of a major behavioral referral, so instead of the student being sent out of class, that that behavior becomes more manageable by the classroom teacher. So instead of always needing that outside support, that somebody can step into the classroom and help give that teacher the strategy. Instead of looking at that larger behavioral response from the student, that we're looking at some smaller occurrences of those behaviors. Or less intensities of that. As well as, we've just noticed within the middle school community in particular, that the culture within that has seemed to be much more, this is just anecdotal information. But the culture within that middle school has seemed to become friendlier towards each other. That kids are greeting each other more, that they're intermingling with each other. Westford's also a small school, so you've been with this eighth-grade kid since you were in kindergarten. But that everyone is okay with being able to talk to somebody and partner up with somebody else. There seems to be, at this point, much less resistance for somebody to be like, Johnny, you're going to go partner with Timmy right now. It's a, they go ahead and do that versus possibly in the past of hearing some resistance or like formally about having to do that.
And the SEL skills are notoriously difficult to assess.
Yeah.
We can often assess when kids are not acting out, so therefore aren't having major behavioral episodes. But the assessing like self-awareness or self-regulation can be difficult to assess. So we have some teachers, we're trying to develop some rubrics that we can use across a classroom to do some assessment of how the entire class is doing. Especially so we could pre, mid, and post-assess an individual goal that a teacher may be setting around some instructional piece. But that's a process. And even when you go onto places like Castle website and you try to look for assessment of SEL, you run into like pages that are like under construction. We're working on this, you know, developing this. So I think that's going to be really some of the fun, well, maybe for wonky people like me. Some of the fun work that we might be doing is trying to design some assessments that are valid and transferable, not just for the kids with the tier-two and tier-three behaviors, but universal. And that's going to be a good challenge for us, I think.
Andrea?
You touched upon reduction in Westford, but I wonder if that trend is also present across the district in other schools?
Of the reduction in?
Reduction in referrals, more success. Because Westford, yes, it's true that the kids know each other K through eight. But I think the same holds true for the junction in Essex Town, with maybe some variation of migration in or out. Parents moving out of the district. But for the most part, I'd say the population has been together throughout the district, K through eight as a whole.
Not in the junction.
Well, they start.
The junction is split in two at the beginning.
Right, but at some point, they all come together at ADL.
I can speak to that a little bit. We don't have as concrete data because our data collection system is a little bit different than what is at Westford. But what I can say is that the tools that we're providing the teachers with and the coaching within the classrooms is really, basically, we're providing the teachers with not only being able to regulate themselves in a possibly escalating situation and therefore be able to control the temperaments a little bit more in their classroom. But we're also setting up clear and consistent structures for students to be able to learn and practice the self-regulation strategies that can get to the small starts of those bigger behaviors that might mean that they have to leave the classroom. Helping teachers recognize those and helping them, help the students recognize those signals that they're starting to feel. And then what can they do about them? So the different types of regulation strategies that they can do while still in the group, while in a little area that's a little bit away from the group. And also ways of communicating their needs if they need to leave the classroom and advocating for themselves. So I don't have the concrete data, but I can say, just be it feedback and anecdotally, that the teachers that are receiving that coaching and are really strengthening and tuning up those structures within their classrooms are noticing that they're able to manage more within their classroom.
Less referrals, which is a good trend. Thank you.
Yeah, that was one of my questions for Jack. I spent a lot of time on the U46 Board. Saw a number of student problems, issues, referrals. And I think the, I'm not sure what measure you're using to determine the SEL training for teachers. But it just appears to me that there are a lot of teachers that have minimal contact, you know, with students and they go from class to class to class. And so are you doing referrals and what's the biggest challenge in implementing SEL at the high school?
Fair question, Al, and thank you. I would say it's too early for us, size, scope, to come back with much data on whether or not we've seen a change in our referral patterns. We do quarterly reports around discipline. So it'll be interesting to see what our trend looks like this year. We certainly have seen a, the trend that others have spoke of about a changing demographic impacting what our school day can look like for certain students. But again, I want to focus that this initiative is about all students. And the block schedule does continue to represent challenges for some of our learners in our traditional settings. I would say that there are many positive discussions taking place around what tweaks might be able to be made either to the existing schedule or creating more alternative settings within our footprint. I think it would be appropriate to say, our goal is to keep all of our students enrolled within our school district to avoid outside placements. And I think having a greater universal understanding of these competencies in all classrooms will help move us, not just to that end, but more, you know, improving our already exceptional graduation rates. Time in the classroom is how students will move towards accruing the credit necessary to meet the graduation status. So I don't know that I have an answer to your question at this time on November 5th. But as we start looking at referral data, we do have a very structured system through Power School. It will be interesting to see if we are trending positively, whether we could tie it directly back to this SEL work. Because again, my work is not solely SEL, but it's very much woven into. So time might tell on that.
Okay, one thing I'm thinking about is we're coming in the budget season. You're the experts. Maybe at one of your meetings, if you could assess a need, some sort of structured need that encompasses across all of the schools, either in terms of referrals or some other parameters that are indicators that would help everyone and synchronize all of the resources within the school, you know, beyond what we have today, thinking outside the box. Because it takes so long to implement strategies in systems that it might be years away. But any thoughts, passing it along to your principals, superintendent, you know, any suggestions? Just, it helps to be more effective quicker and to have that data. I'm a data-driven person. The board is pretty much data-driven as well. So this is an important area for us. Thank you. Great presentations.
I have a couple of questions. The, and it might be speaking to something similar to what Al had mentioned. It sounds like there may be different measurement tools being utilized at each of the schools. So as we think about this as a systemic approach to SEL, it also seems like there's amazing efforts happening around blogs or different tools. And I don't, I'm guessing you guys are probably like a PLC and you're working together and sharing so you're not having to do however many, eight times as much work as might otherwise be able to be shared. I'm sure a lot of the work is age-specific or culturally more or less effective in the buildings based on the vibe or the relationships. But I'm just hopeful and imagining that that's collaborated and really asking that we get to some consistency on capturing information and data. That would be great. And if there's tools that parents are using in Hiawatha, hopefully they're using them at EES because that tool's been shared. And at Summit, and there's a common language being built across students, teachers, and families across the district. So that as that feeds up the chain, there's that base of knowledge. So the other piece, I think, is maybe more specific to Jeff and understanding the intentionality around the work. And maybe, I think you mentioned advisory maybe as a lever that could be utilized. So that's curious and interesting to me to know where that would be in the process of thinking or timeline for something like that. And then thinking about proficiency graduation requirements. It feels a lot less about just time in the classroom that gets kids to graduation than demonstrating proficiencies. And so to what extent do our proficiencies reflect the SEL competencies, like specifically making that link?
So currently, I'll address that last part first. As we know, for the last, I believe it's three years, we've been tying in worker traits and transferable skills. So the discussion as we have it right now is not to add on another level, but we're looking at the relationships between those worker traits and transferable skills and the SEL competencies. Because the language is very similar and there is a lot of commonality in the behavioral expectations. So that's the last part. The first part of your question, it's really early to know exactly what this might look like. The committee that was formed with 11 individuals, and Patrick, you kind of asked about, has there been any pushback? We just formed, I believe, 14 different committees with an expectation or a hope of having eight to 10 per. And that was teacher-based interest signup. We had no, zero difficulty filling the SEL committee. And so it is an impassioned, interested, self-selected group of individuals to work towards the further implementation of this vision. They've met once. I met with one of the leaders within that group to see how it went, because I was in PLC meetings at that time, ironically enough. But I did check in and spent 15 minutes with them. And advisory is an area of interest of exploring because of the small nature of that group. To get into some of these highly interpersonal soft skills, but important skills, it works very effectively in smaller groups that are established with mixed grades, where some of that modeling can take place, where you've got seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen together to start talking about what this can look like, not just in the classroom, but in the hallways, at various events, and outside of the educational setting and beyond. So it's early to know what that might look like. But it's exciting that they are impassioned by the work.
Is there, even in its early phases, is there a timeline or expectation for that advisory group to have something concrete?
At this time, the only timelines we have is kind of like that district SEL calendar that we're looking at. So this is like a subset of that. And we don't have any timelines of implementation of SEL work within advisories. I think ironically, again, there is an advisory committee. So marrying some of those individuals, because with our changed schedule, there have been adjustments made to the advisory schedule that may require further investigation and more work.
I think this is the timeline that the board can hold the district accountable to. Which would be, we selected the competencies, now working the SEL standards. With those standards, we can begin to assess, we can draw work into instruction, curriculum programming, and the professional development. And that's the path that we're on. I think what you're hearing is some bold and courageous experimentation that's going on alongside of trying to build the commitment and understanding and awareness. Which is exactly the type of, you know, risk-taking and growth mindset that we want of our learners. We see it within our staff. But this is the timeline that I think Dylan will continue to update us on and the board can hold the district accountable to.
It is our goal, the strength, to really talk about common assessments that we can use in regards to this. I think folks are using the assessments they have right now. The district data is one indicator. And I think for those schools that have been doing PBIS, there's more of a wickerous process to collect that data. So that probably it's more valuable data point at those schools than some of the others. And that's a goal for us to, across the district, to be consistent with how we use district referrals, regardless if we're a PBIS school or not. So that's a data point. We have a youth risk behavior survey data that comes out. It's a little, it's a lag when we get that, but that's trend data that we're looking at. We have the equity survey data that's, we're looking at. So we do have some data points that we can start to triangulate. And we're going to work on some common assessments to use across as well. But that'll be the work to this period.
Okay. What a past urgent time. And I'm conscious of the fact, I'm sure that these folks have lots to do before they go to bed. So thank you all. This was very informative and helpful in our understanding what's happening with the investment that we as a board agreed to make in this area of work. So, thank you all.
On behalf of our students, thank you for the work that you do and creating our culture of collaboration. You certainly have added to that and brought a whole different level to it. So I, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate what you're doing with the staff and especially students. So thank you.
Okay, and speaking of students, let's move to our student report. Thanks, Del. It's nice to meet you too.
Awesome. So, Lily, I, we're asked by Beth to give a student report about student voice to the principals last Wednesday, all the principals and the district, along with the district managers. So we did that and we did a little activity with them that we wanted to kind of share with you guys. And it was also like we used some of the information that we learned from that to compare to the board survey that we sent out. So yeah.
Yeah. Remember when we talked about student voice, we had that spectrum that we mentioned? So at the meeting, we had papers with each of the different parts of the spectrum. And we wanted, what were the red signals, wherever they are now?
Yeah. Yeah.
So we had each principal put a red sticky note for where they thought they were right now. So they're, each of those things are activities that they're doing that bring student voice to that level. So we just wanted to show you just the numbers-wise, you don't have to actually read them. But this show, so this is all the way to the left of the spectrum.
Yeah.
And you can keep going.
And then the green sticky notes were where the teachers think that we, or the principals think that we should be on the spectrum.
Or just some activities that they want to implement. So if, so yeah, we just put it on this scale, just the same thing. So the where we are now, which is those red sticky notes. It's kind of, it's not exact comparison because, so these numbers from the board responses are that survey we sent out to you guys. We did only get four responses.
Five, we got five.
Five responses. So numbers aren't complete. But, and the, so these are activities that are, so they're not exactly like student voice as a whole. But so they, so it looks like they, right now, mostly student voices are on the activism part based on what activities all the schools are doing in the district. And then underneath you can see where the board thinks we are now. And feel free, if you didn't answer the survey, to weigh in now if you'd like to, either on this slide or the next one, which is where we should be. Does anyone have anything that they'd share about where we are now?
I was, one of the things that I would just like to point out is that from the five responses that we got, each person picked a different thing. So, yeah, Keely.
It was probably kind of hard to answer. I like the way that you did it with the principals, that they could put different activities in different areas of the spectrum. Because it's like, at least to me, like probably there are different parts of participation that belong in different places.
Yeah.
And choosing just one that describes where everything is now was a little bit of, I'm not very good at darts.
Yeah. So definitely that's important to bring up because it's definitely something that should be addressed. But we also just wanted to kind of like notice, like in comparison. And then working on like forming a better idea of like where we are now, even if, you know, that means like splitting it into different groups. Because I mean, all of these like apply to different things. But it was just interesting to see like the difference. And then this is, the results from when we asked where we should be. And only four out of the fives, board members answered this one for the where we should be.
And it was, and the, the principals took these and then added activities of what they want, wanted to do.
Yeah.
And they did like a group kind of work around this one.
Yeah. So I mean, it's not exactly, you can just kind of see that there are five things they want to do in the activism level. So they want to focus on, or it looks like they want to focus on that and partnership the most.
Yeah. And that was kind of like compared, or like more evenly with the board responses in that column. And so part of the thing for our presentation to the principals was that we were just kind of starting, like that was the very first presentation we'd given to them and just kind of like mapping out, like at the very beginning of where we want to move with them and like what, where we want to take student voice and what kinds of things we're hoping to do this year. And they were hoping to see more of like a mapped-out version of what we had planned. So here are like the starting steps that we were thinking of based on meeting with them.
Yeah. So the feedback we got was that before we go, actually go into the schools, if that's what we're going to do, they, I think the principals wanted to meet with us individually beforehand and figure out exact, kind of outline what we're going to do when we go to the schools. So that's our first thing that we're going to do. I think it'll probably just be with the middle schools because for the high schools and the smaller grade schools, we have different ideas. But just so with the middle schools, we kind of know what we're going in to do, what kind of conversations we want to have, so it's not complete referral. And then after that, we'll schedule the school visits if that's what we decide to do. And then also, we wanted to just kind of make the principals feel a little more involved and like have a trusting relationship with us when we go into the schools. So we thought a good idea to do that was have the principals send these like monthly stories. So from their perspective, also send it. And then we'll share it with the board. So just one thing from their school, one per month, just something, it can be good or bad that they saw from, about the students. And then we'll share it with you guys. And so it's just for them to feel like they're also involved in like talking about their schools. And so that, I think we're going to start with that, just so they feel a little more involved. And then we'll be able to go deeper into the other things. And then for EHS and CTE, we sort of have different plans. For EHS, we, our plan is to have one advisory a month where students can schedule with me and Laura to talk to us about any issues that they have. So this will be broadcast to the whole school and then they can come schedule with us. So our first step for that is to reach out to Mr. Riordan or Mr. Hill, Assistant Principal, and figure out if that's doable, just figure out if they have any questions or concerns. And so just do the logistics for that. And then for CTE, we're going to reach out to Mr. Travers, who's the Director of CTE, and hopefully CTE Student Gov to talk to them about what they would like their involvement with their student voice to be, whether that's coming to our EHS Student Gov or just talking with us on our own. But we still have, we haven't talked to them yet. So we have to get introduced to them and figure out next steps with that. That's all. Any questions?
Kim? I'm just thinking about it now, but I wonder what a student response would be or even what your responses would be to the spectrum in thinking about what students would view to be where we are now and where we may like to be on the topic of student voice.
I mean, I think it might differentiate depending on who you ask. I think if you asked Laura and me, it would be different than if you asked a student at school that isn't involved in anything like this. Like they would think that they don't, they probably don't have any voice. So I think it does matter who you ask, but.
Do you guys do, even if it were just on that question? Is, is that something that has a rapid distribution channel through like Survey Monkey or something? I don't know, for gathering data from voices that aren't yours where you have routinely pretty impactful.
Yeah. I mean, we could do that. I think we've sent out, or we haven't, but there have been surveys sent out to the whole school or middle, we can send them out to the middle schools too. We could do that if.
Just curious, I think just as a, something to think about. It's, be curious to me how students would answer that.
Yeah. In the board survey that we sent out, one of the questions was if we were to send out a survey like that to the student body, what are some of the questions that you would like us to ask? And so that wasn't included in the presentation. But there were a few responses to that with like possible questions. So we could add like the spectrum to that if we send out a survey.
Other questions? Thank you. Oh, okay. Keely, then Patrick.
I just wanted to say the suggested reading that you sent. Like at first I just saw the like two pages that were in the board share thing. I was like, I didn't really understand it very much. But I clicked the link at the end and got the full report. And I don't know if other people looked at that too, but I would definitely recommend looking at it. Because it went into a lot more depth on a lot of these things and contextualized this like spectrum and like I just thought it was really interesting. Especially the argument that it made for student journalism as being an important part of student voice. I was like, wow, people still think that journalism is relevant. But no, it, it just, it had a lot of good ideas for assessing the different aspects and like what challenges to anticipate. So I thought that was really interesting. Thanks for sharing that.
Patrick?
I guess I'm pretty disappointed with the number of responses that came, especially from the board, like half of us and in some cases, less than half of us or gave up partway through the survey. If you add fewer responses and, you know, from question to question. I appreciate you guys keeping the faith and sticking with us because clearly we have work to do in as far as making sure that we're holding up our end of the bargain and listening to student voice. But, you know, again, I, I don't know. I guess I'm just trying to express the fact that I'm, I'm pretty disappointed in us as a board that only half of us managed to get responses.
Keely?
I think Andrea would lose.
Andrea. In the survey, there was an area that we could provide responses in, besides speaking to the survey itself, but were the responses somewhat consistent or differentiated between those that did respond?
What do you mean, just for all the questions?
Yes. Was there any consistency in, in some of the responses or the varied degree?
Like the spectrum?
Yes.
Um, I think it definitely depended on the question. Like there was one which I think was like, I don't know, I'd have to look at it. But it was like, where do you think like student voice would be appreciated most or whatever? And it was like 100% of the people agreed. We can definitely bring that up in the next student report.
Sure.
If I have to go back and look at the results. But yeah, there were definitely areas where people agreed more often than others.
Yeah. And I think it was a little harder to see just because some of the questions only had four people. So when we're looking at the full data, we couldn't really tell if it was a general thing because only four people responded. So four people having different ideas doesn't contribute so much to the general public. So, yeah.
As the like magical person number five who just responded today, when I read the board notes and realized we were supposed to have responded, I would point out to Patrick's point that I have never received as many emails in my board email as we did between the last meeting and this one. So probably those people who didn't respond was because it got lost with the dozens of emails we received about the healthcare negotiation. So I didn't put a reason for why I was so late, but that was why I lost your email and I apologize. And I'm sure that happened to other people too.
Yeah.
And as one who's going to fess up with absolutely no good excuse that I didn't even do it for these poor ladies, I just clicked on it and it is still active. So I don't know if it's helpful for us to maya culpa ourselves and, and just maybe while it's fresh and we're doing our review in the meeting, if that is something we have time to do, if that can be helpful to inform at least this body's opinion and maybe to include your reflections on it too, if you guys didn't complete the surveys yourselves. I think for me, I would find that especially interesting to, not that you have to be uniform in even how you see it, but just your reflections on it would be interesting to us too.
Now you're going to have like, Adam, 15 responses.
Yes, Jeff.
I was just going to offer support, not that you need my support, but if the request for a student survey is something that is the interest of the board and the superintendent and the district office, I can, I can assist you in that process of getting it out. Sometimes there's a challenge in that. So if that is the interest of the board, I think the responses would be an interesting thing to call. So I throw that support in your direction.
Yeah. I would encourage you, if you're going to do that, that maybe you work with some folks who know something about doing surveys. I mean, if you just say, hey, do things to have voice without any context, I'm not sure how valuable that is. But I think if you say, are there areas that you wish students have voice? More voice, voice, and what are they? Then that requires somebody to think about them. I found the, I found the scale challenging because I would think of different issues. And depending on what the issue was, I would put where I thought student voice should be in different places on that scale. So I didn't feel like I could give a great answer because it depended on what I was thinking. So, but thank you. And thank you for taking time to meet with the leadership team. I think that's great. Okay. Anything else you need from us right now? Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we'll move on. Whoops, I lost my agenda. But I think it's the Governance Committee Recommendation Action.
Oh my God. Brent.
So before we get started, I just want to give kudos to Kim, Keely, Diane, and Beth, and Martha for their help and guidance in the work of the Governance Task Team. I think everyone had an opportunity to preview our recommendation at the last meeting, asked some good questions, gave some great feedback. So here we are today with our final recommendation on the charge that we were given. And just to recap, our, our recommendation is essentially to recommend to the full board that we begin a learning process to begin to discover together the pros and cons of policy governance. And to work directly with a consultant from the VSBA to investigate policy governance more fully so that we can make an informed decision about whether or not to adopt it as a full board, as a way to govern ourselves going forward. So we lay out in the recommendation, which was part of your packet, the, some of the rationale, the background, some helpful links, and a timeline. Since we've given this a lot of attention at the last meeting, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have or anything else that we might be able to do to help the full board in its deliberation.
Okay. Questions, comments? Todd?
So it's a question before us now whether we want to do this two-step thing or not. I mean, is that?
The question is, do we want to accept the recommendation of the Governance Task Team, which is this two-step process? Other questions or comments? Patrick?
I think it's a great recommendation. Even after sitting through, you know, the, the learning aspect and the panel that we had, I'd feel much better deciding whether or not we were ready for policy governance after getting, you know, some more learning about it. So I think the recommendation of having us go through that process and then evaluate after we as a board have kind of a more explicit, like what I think will probably be a hands-on feel for, how to create the policies that we would need to do and whatnot is a, a good middle ground between deciding today, yes, we're going that way or no, we're not.
Jessica? With that engagement that we had, or we had some different models that were presented to us, there was full policy governance implementation. There was some policy governance and then retention of certain activities, one of them being negotiations and other insularity. So I guess the question is, is that also going to be part of the consideration? Or whether we just focus strictly on policy governance, but not a variation of policy governance with some of the other models that were presented where their feet were, one foot was in policy. with some of the other models that were presented where their feet were, one foot was in policy governance and the other foot was non-policy governance, but yet they were, had changed.
I was listening to the panel as I was striving for that part of the meeting, so I got most of it, but I will say the one thing we seem not to be able to get rid of in its most full implementation of policy governance is negotiation.
Yeah, right.
So don't wish that away because that will remain ours no matter what we do. The other versions, I think, are, are varying degrees of full implementation.
Right, which included negotiations and that's why it triggered the question whether we retain some of what we presently have been doing, but then dip our feet into policy governance.
I think what, what we heard, especially at the panel, what we saw at the panel was varying levels of commitment to policy governance and fidelity to actually following policy governance. Now, and, and then I think it, I think we sort of ended with Sean, who was sort of very adamant about like, you're either in or you're not.
Right.
What, what I'll say, having been through the process before, is that you can kind of, you can kind of get at, get at that in terms of creating the various bowls. So, so as, as we learn more about policy governance, if governance, if we go in this direction, you can, you can actually create layers of sort of accountability and accessibility depending on the area. And so for one area, you may have a little bit more strict board accountability on a particular issue that may, for whatever reason, be a special interest for the board, that over time might become less restrictive in terms of how the board interacts with that particular policy or that area. So there, as we, as we learn more, you can sort of see that there are ways to moderate your intensity of policy governance around particular issues or topics.
And I think what, one of the things that Brendan's describing is still being, implementing policy governance with fidelity, but within the way you define policy, you're creating another tier that gets to a greater level of specificity. So you're still doing policy governance with integrity. You've just decided in that area, you're more specific about what you expect to see in terms of monitoring, for instance. And so it's, it's sort of a self-awareness around a category that you think requires greater specificity versus we said this in policy and the administration did this and in theory, that's sort of right, but that's not really exactly what we were looking for. So now we're going to throw you something else. That's a different version, I think, that maybe it, I don't think would be ideal for us to, to go into it thinking we are going to do policy governance and we're gonna, you know, ebb and flow with it when it suits our needs. I think that wouldn't benefit the administration.
No.
And I think until we all learn more together about it, then we can make a decision if we're doing it. But if we're doing it, we would sort of approach those areas that need different attention still through policy.
And I think our consultant would help us, if, if areas of sort of like hyper-focus started to emerge in our discussions, I think our consultant would help us work through those as a board, like, you know, why is this particular issue such a focus or why is there so much tension around this particular issue to help us kind of unpack it a little bit?
Right.
Yeah, so I'm not inclined to accept the recommendation, but I'm guessing I'm probably in the minority. So if the majority is to go forward, I think we should think about the timing. I don't know that starting this in November, December is probably the wisest thing, given the budget. So just that thought.
Did you talk about the timeline at all, Brendan, in terms of how much commitment we already have in January, February?
Well, I know that Kim, Kim reached out to the VSBA and talked a little bit through the timing and I don't know, Kim, if you have any sort of insight into?
No, it really wasn't very specific, except to get a sense of if we were to do stage, I think we've done some of step one as we looked at sort of what that audit piece looked like, but then exploring policy governance is really almost a training around what it is and what it would look like. And that learning piece, I don't remember, like if you were to take that from what I remember from years past through the VSBA as a few hours, maybe so I, and Val was available to do that in the next four to six weeks. So, you know, maybe by the end of December, doing the actual work of, so that learning feels like it's reasonable to imagine happening before the end of the year, the, the, because at some point there should be a decision, because that's where the work is going to require more time and attention, I think. And that, I think, is recognized to take the time it's going to need to take and not necessarily start before we're done going through budgets. So it feels reasonable that the learning might happen before the end of the year and then there'd be a decision period that might happen over a couple of meetings in January. And then if it were to be decided to move forward, it would make no sense, in my opinion, to think about beginning any further training or intentional work around that until after February break, like just thinking about it logistically.
Keely?
Yeah, just to attribute to that, the idea was to do phase one or phase two before budget season so that then we know that after the intense part of budget season, we can get started either on phase three of policy governance implementation, or we will by that time have in place what steps we're going to take as a board on our own to formalize good governance practices in the areas that we laid out. But if we don't start anything until after budget season, our ability to do all of the things that we need to do before academic year 2020, 2021 begins would be challenging. So.
I think what, what you would see, although we would need to work this out with the VSBA consultant, is we would probably have a series of learning sessions either before or during our regular meetings through the end of the calendar year. And that might get us almost, that might get us all, all the way through phase two or at least most of the way through phase two, where we might have one or two additional sessions at the very beginning of January.
Andre?
So what I understand is what we're voting is on the recommendation to go forward with step one and step two, which is still exploration. But what I would also advocate is if we went forward, we're with, you know, came to the recommendation is also to see if we're going to have an actual model of how we handle one thing under a present board governance versus how it would be handled under policy governance. I mean, it doesn't have to be all our work encompassing, but just one aspect of it, such as I think one of the big pieces to policy governance that comes to my mind besides negotiation, but there's also the budget work. And I think if, or if there's something else that we could explore in, not as a model presented in that fashion as part of the implementing step one and step two, or explore exploration rather than implementation.
Right, I think, I mean, I think that realistically, because it, you know, learning policy governance and then actually practicing policy governance is a transition.
Yes.
And so it's not as if we flip a switch and suddenly everything looks totally different, especially things as big and with as many moving pieces as the budget.
Right, but if we're going forward, for example, into policy governance, I guess the question is, is how is it going to differ versus what we're doing now versus that? And I'm not, not sure about policy governance all the way.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why I would like to see models of how this is versus what this could be.
Right, and I think that's exactly what the learning is meant to do. It's meant to answer those very specific questions you have about like, what does it look like in policy governance? And also another thing that, that came up during the panel discussion and afterwards is I started to hear a lot of assumptions about policy governance. So it was clear to me at least, and this is something we discussed at the committee level, that the board doesn't have an adequate understanding of policy governance to really make a decision at this moment to say yea or nay. And so that's why we felt like, boy, there's a lot of misconceptions about policy governance. Let's make sure we all really fully understand what it is that we're either for or against and what it would look like for Essex Westford or not.
Right, because I, I think part of my discussion is, is there's still looking at one of the responses that with regards to communicating with the parents or having parents involved, is that one of the panel members said, well, I have the final say. And I'm not sure if that's necessarily a good communication tool, especially with the publics involved, considering they vote on the budgets, et cetera. And I'm concerned about that.
So I think, I think one of the discussions we should have in this preliminary phase is, once we know a little more about it, if we're going to go in this direction, aren't we going to do policy governance with fidelity? And if we are, what would that mean? Or aren't we not comfortable doing that? And what are the downsides to doing some policy governance and some not? And clearly, we heard particularly from one district who wasn't willing to give up some past practices in order to implement with fidelity. And then you also hear about districts who do it until it's not convenient to do it and then they drop it. So I'll just speak personally and say, if we're going to do this, I would only want to do it if we're going to do it with fidelity. Otherwise, I don't, I don't, we're not in a bad place. We're not a board that is trying to make administrative decisions. So, you know, I think we need to keep that in mind. Keely?
To speak to Andre's question, I think one of the most productive ways to understand that kind of change is to do sort of like war gaming, where, you know, ideally, we would have a training where somebody like Sean, somebody like Elaine comes and we're like, okay, you have seven buses to run your whole system. How do you do it? But I don't know that we can make that happen. So, but early on, we did watch all those like meetings and maybe if we could go back to our notes from early in the committee and see if there's like illustrative sections that we could recommend to people who have Andre's question, like just to see example, half an hour of the different boards that we were studying, looking at something. I don't remember if I took good enough notes to make that recommendation, but I know you did.
Oh, I did, Kelly. What I would say, Andre, is that by accepting the report and taking the recommendation to go through phase one and phase two.
Right.
You learn about a system, okay, we do need a system, by the way, to have it structured when or however we go through it. But if we learn about this system and yes, play, play the war gaming, okay, and figure out, is this really the system we want to go? If it's not, then we have only spent the time and the small amount of money to figure out if it's what we want. If it's not, then we have every option to look and find out. There were others, I believe there was one other group that was, was there that said that they were doing high governance, okay, that it gives us a goal to go for. So it's either, I'd rather make an informed decision versus making assumptions, okay, I'd rather get the, what's the information and let's make an informed decision versus just making a decision on an assumption.
Right, and just to clarify though, I think what's important to me is to see this or that, but to see an apple to oranges comparison, not strict advocacy on policy governance.
I, I'm not necessarily advocating for.
No, no, I understand.
I'm advocating for making an educated decision.
Yeah, I agree, and I'm not for or against the recommendation because I think the recommendation is exploratory and that is what I'm taking it as.
And I guess I would just say that Keely spent a pretty extensive amount of time looking at policies or at models out there that are being used in education that have structure that are things to look at or in government, government, and shared with us the, a presentation that took a look at a lot of these things. And, and none of us came into it saying it's like a binary, like do nothing or do policy governance, but really curious about what other things are out there. And so in terms of a take it off the shelf, it's been used in education, there's support for it, that is the option. And so it's been explored through panel, we did, Sean came last fall maybe or whenever it was. So there's been a few different ways to go around it without the more theoretical, deeper understanding of what it is. And so to move beyond admiring the situation of the problem to making decisions on it, it seemed to make sense that we have a common language and understanding of what it is.
Yes.
And that makes sense. And the bottom of our recommendation, because there wasn't really, our charge was to provide recommendations and the task team based on the information that came out of the goal that was among our board goals, came up with what sort of good governance aspects were. That was, one of our goals was to do that as a board. And so the very end of this says, if we do that study and we don't want to do it, then we're suggesting that the chair work with a consultant to put some structure around good governance. And to Diane's point, we will all learn a whole lot about what a particular model looks like and discipline around what that could look like. And I don't think there's anything not good for having done that together, that learning together, no matter what the outcome is, but it will, like this committee is done after tonight's meeting, we're approving our final minutes. So, so we cease to exist. Do we take the recommendation or we don't? If we don't take the recommendation or we decide not to do after the learning phase policy governance, then it is for the chair to figure out with a consultant what we do next.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion that we approve the recommendation of the governance task team.
I'll make that recommendation or that motion.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the both say nay. Okay, so did you get that Natasha? Okay, great, thanks. All right, let's move on to board engagement planning. Keely and Liz and Patrick have been doing a lot of work, so, in Liz's absence, I believe Keely's going to report for the committee.
I have not been given much work until I made the most recent meetings.
But you're breaking. But I hear that, yeah, I hear. So you've all received a link to a spreadsheet and I can send that again if anyone isn't sure where to find it, with opportunities to sign up to bring a pie to our next meeting. In case anyone missed it or is watching at home and hasn't heard about it, we'll be doing pies and pie charts. So it'll be an opportunity to come together as a community, bring pies, be really competitive about it, like Patrick here, I hear Martha is competitive about pies as well. Tastes lots of pie, so my kids are excited about attending a board meeting. And then have, have a learning about the budget process, which is where the pie charts come in, before finding out who got the community favorite votes in various categories about pies. So we hope that everyone in the board can get involved, even if So, we hope that everyone in the board can get involved, even if you don't like baking pie. And there's a variety of ways to get involved. You can bring a pie baked by one of your friend's relatives or your favorite local bakery. You can sign up for various ways to help out, like bringing flyers around to community locations. I think Liz is going to have, bring those to Central Office tomorrow. And in the spreadsheet, there's another page that has a list of places that we're hoping to share this information, like libraries and the senior center and stuff like that. We'll also need people to be involved in various ways on the day. We're going to be asking some questions to the community about how they like to receive information about the budget process and be involved in it. Liz is still working on those questions. We'll also need people to help with just the logistics of tabulating votes about pies and welcoming people and getting name tags and all that kind of stuff. Also, we want to be available for questions, because anytime we share information, people have questions. So, we're hoping that everybody will be present to just talk about the budget process and how people can continue to learn and be involved. Does that kind of reflect what we've been meeting about, would you say?
Do you want to talk about the article for the Essex reporter?
We could. We are trying to publicize this event in a lot of ways, because in May, our turnout did, was not as great as we hoped for the board engagement. And this is the next time that we're trying to make an engagement instead of a regular action item type of meeting. So, the board is taking the slot in the Essex reporter that Ben Dickey sends them articles and commentary and opinions a couple times a month. We've drafted something, just sort of laying out why we're doing this and what people should expect from the budget process. And I wrote it to be first person, but if we all get behind it, we can put it in the voice of the whole board, or Martha was thinking about sending it out. So, would people be interested in, as a whole board group, putting out a message to the Essex reporter about how to be aware of the budget process? Or would you rather that comes from Martha or the communications committee?
The, the shared voice of the board would be helpful, then I can't imagine what's objectionable about it, but from all of us, but I shouldn't speak for everybody. So, I also think if you guys wanted to do it, or Martha wanted to do it, any of that's good. It's all good. Who doesn't want pie?
Well, Keely drafted a great article. Makes a hell of a change between creating a budget and cooking. I think it would be powerful if it came from the whole board, but you may not feel comfortable with that without reading the article first.
Do you want me to share it with Brian right now and pull it up? Or is this enough time spent on this right now and we can circulate it?
Yeah, I think we've probably spent enough time. I'm not sure what timeline is for getting it to the reporter.
You want it out next week? Next Wednesday?
But.
So, it would be Monday?
Yeah, Monday, Friday, Tuesday.
Yeah, Ben tries to get it in earlier. Can you share it out if anyone has any objections?
If you put it out, when you're ready, I'll find it, they're going out under my name too.
Well, I was just thinking, having signed the Essex Westford School District Board, no individual names. So, how about if we, if we share it?
I'll share that as soon as I can, yeah.
And if you let me know by tomorrow night, if you're not okay with it. Okay? I, I just need a tight time.
If you don't respond, will that be?
Right.
And okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? Are you okay with that? All right. Other questions about the event or your responsibilities and relationship to it? Keely's drafted some great slides, and it's pretty basic and simple, and I think that's the right way to go about it.
We have within that, that sort of the timeline for topical consideration under the budget. Do we, I don't know if we would know that, like what we'll be reviewing when? So, folks with particular interests might put it on their calendar if they've come for pie. Now, they are like, oh, you're doing, you know, facilities in whatever. Like, I don't, I don't know if that's something we know yet, but if your budget plan.
I, I asked Ben to try to fill in that information, because it's in the presentation that Brian prepared for the annual budget information meeting last year. But if we just like add on some stuff to the beginning of that timeline, then I think that would be the spectrum of information.
I think definitely the dates is probably a rough sketch, and then we can always keep people fresh in case a topic flows over or goes earlier. Sure.
Anything else? Okay. Great. Well, again, a huge thanks to Keely and Liz and Patrick. Any other task team updates?
The ground rules is starting next week, and that, that very first ground rule is with both unions, so it's usually just one person from each of the groups in the administration. Martha is going, because the one day that others could make, I could not, if that's okay.
Yeah, I actually.
Or is Andre? I don't know.
We're both gone.
Oh, good.
Because Deb, I asked Deb, and she said we could.
As long as it's not three of us. Okay, perfect. Right. So, it's just, and then, and then as a matter of process, what we've done historically is the first exchange for each of the associations. The whole team is there, and then we generally manage it with team meetings separately, and then one of us at the table. Just even in the managing the number of bodies around the table, that's been helpful. And I've appreciated the support and knowing we've always got backup, so.
Okay. Questions about negotiations? All right. Then local and statewide updates. So, Kim and Diane and I attended the SBA regional meeting. Was that last week?
Twenty-third.
The twenty-third. It was actually great, I thought. Very informative. We spent some time on the healthcare negotiation, and we had a person there who sits on the employer commission. So, folks got to ask a lot of questions. I think the most relevant thing that she said, since we have some time constraints here, is that anytime up until the arbitration hearing happens, there still could be a settlement. So, they have both, both parties have submitted their last best offer, but there is a hearing on those last best offers. So, you, there could be a settlement before that. Otherwise, the arbitrator has to pick the offer from one party or the other. She, I don't think there was a date scheduled, so, so.
I did have November first arbitration process begins with a hearing, but maybe that was the earliest at which it could begin. I had in my notes.
I think she said she thought it was going to be around November fifteenth.
Okay. But. The briefs, when they are submitted, which I had in my notes as mid-November, will become public after that point, so she couldn't speak to the current last best offers that were submitted, because they're not public yet. And if nothing else gets resolved by December fifteenth, one will be chosen in its entirety, so we will have information. One of the things that was interesting that she said was that the law did not allow for the third choice to be the fact-finder's report. So, you know, that's an area where I think as they go through this first round of process, they may be making recommendations to what may change in the law in future years, so.
I'm trying.
How, is this going to be a binding arbitration?
Yes.
Okay.
It's last best top for binding, so the arbitrator has to choose one or the other.
Then it's opposed, and there's no appeal to that?
No recourse.
From either party?
No.
Okay.
The second thing we did at the meeting was to have a presentation on the, what's it called?
Annual snapshot.
Annual snapshot, thank you. And we saw a little bit about that last spring. One more level of data has been added for each school district. There's supposed to be more data added in December. So, we've talked about having a presentation to the full board in January, and perhaps Patrick, who presented at this meeting, Patrick Halliday, will be able to come and talk with us. But one thing we learned is that you can see a lot more now than you can, could see last spring. So, by clicking on each of the areas, you can see the data that's been loaded in that area, and you can see what other data is still to come. So, it's worth taking a look at. The way, best way to find it, I found, was to go to the AAOE website and just put annual snapshot in the search line, and it will come right up. So, one of the important things that he said, in my opinion, is they don't want the school districts and school boards to use this data to compare themselves to others. They want them, they want us to use it to ask questions about what we're doing to improve our performance in areas where it needs to be improved. The final local update I would give, and Kim may have some more, is Patrick went to a meeting with our local legislators, and Dylan pointed out that it looks like the AAOE is not going to propose a recommendation to update the unified or the union school district statutes, which is where we hoped our fixes around board membership elections and replacement would become permanent. Since it looks like that's not going to happen, it's probably going to take separate legislation. But also, Dylan, in my back and forth with him, wondered if we were going to invite our local legislators to meet with us, and your agenda planning team thinks that's a good idea. So, we're going to try to schedule something for December. So, be thinking about the topics that you think we should be talking to folks about.
About that, Blaine Haney had a question about when the rule sunsets. Does that happen after next year? Or does that happen starting in twenty? I only ask because the elections for the new school board are obviously in April.
It's af, it's at the end of FY twenty. So, July, the sun sets July first, two thousand twenty.
Just wanted to make sure that our elections in April weren't going to be impacted.
Yes.
Before the fix was in.
Yeah. They are not. Okay. Kim, do you have anything else?
I don't think so. I would say people interested in the status of the negotiations, the VTBSBA.org, right on the front page, you can click through the commissions, the both sides' reports to the fact-finders, and then the fact-finder's report is there. So, that I found very informative and interesting to have some insight into where they're negotiating from at this point.
We had Secretary French called back that piece where we were going to owe for tuition and paid that come from the local funds. He has pulled back on that, so thanks to Erin for her work. Yes, with that, yes.
Good.
Central Work happening, having fun, seventy-three. Advisory group and the rules and the implementation and definition of special ed is another.
I assume that's one of the things we may want to speak to her, that's the representative. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right. So, we have our engagement with the public on November nineteenth, and our next regular board meeting is December third. If anyone has agenda topics for that board meeting, please let me know. And otherwise, this is now an opportunity to spend a minute filling out the meeting evaluation, if you wish to do so. It's very helpful to me, and actually, the whole agenda planning team is looking at those results now and talking about that, so.
Can you remind us where to find that?
It's in the board.
Internet.
Right. Which I can never remember. I always access the documents from going to my Google Drive and going to shared drives, so I can't actually remember how to find the.
The link keeps being on the board homepage, and now it's gone.
So, I have, I have, I have mine bookmarked, so I can't tell you. I bet Natasha can tell you that. So, anything else? Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you all.